Here around the corner and you know, once again, they make excellent look excellence look easy, but really it's a lot of work. So come on down.
So second.
Seconding, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Ms. Lisa.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Hey Devon, we can't see here.
Just everything's windows.
Excellent. Hello Lisa, proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, you have before you a list of 27 claims that staff has reviewed for a total of $18,195.65 and staff recommends approval as presented.
All right, may I have a motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, motion carries. And then number two is consideration for approval of minutes from the August 18th, 2020 meeting. I suppose you reviewed them. May I have a motion to approve those?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. And again, as I say this, the Open Meetings Act requires me to assume publicly and state that these are unanimous unless I hear otherwise. And I'll sound like a broken record, but I'll say that over and over. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, may I have a motion to go out of the indigent hospital claims board meeting and into the regular meeting?
So moved.
Been moved and seconded, discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right. First thing is approved agenda. Mr. County Manager, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we do not have any changes.
In that case, may I have a motion to approve the agenda as is?
Motion to approve.
Second. Been moved and seconded by Commissioner Crowley. Discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. All right. Devon?
Where?
Lost our...
Yes.
There you go. Oh, well, yes, we love to see ourselves. All right. All right. Next thing is the consent agenda. And number one is the consideration of approval for regular meeting minutes for August 18th, 2020. The second thing on the consent agenda is consideration of approval of fiscal year 21 budget adjustments. Number one. Then number three on the consent agenda is consideration of approval of the memorandum of understanding and addendum to the same for New Mexico Cooperative Extension Service, New Mexico State University. Are there any questions or comments before we take a motion on the consent agenda? There being none, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously, which gets us to new business. All right. Under item number one, is consideration of letter of support for TechSource's United States Department of Energy grant application. Bill Redmond, is Mr. Redmond online or is he here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am here.
Hello, Bill, how are you doing?
Hello, Jack, how are you doing, my friend?
Nice to see you, Mr. Congressman.
Well, it's, as James A. Garfield said, it is good to be seen. And so, so thank you so much. It's good to see you as well. And this is going to be a very quick introduction. I know you have a lot on your agenda and we'll keep this to 10 minutes or less. Currently, I'm working with a company called TechSource. TechSource is here in Los Alamos and we are in the management team at Los Alamos National Laboratory. And we have some very interesting, very novel and innovative patents that we have for extracting minerals, including rare earth minerals. And how this phone call came up, or how this meeting came about is that many of you know that the tensions between the United States and China have been ramping up for the last six months or so here. And the United States receives approximately 80% of rare earth minerals needed for medical, for research, for high-tech equipment, for satellites, for defense. About 80% of our rare earths come from China. And once COVID began and China was not playing well with the, the US and the rest of the world, and there was the, the threat to cut the United States off from rare earth minerals, Congress and the administration very rapidly snapped into place. And there's been some new funding for the, the acquisition of rare earth elements, rare earth minerals, and also other critical minerals. And the San Juan Basin is actually on one, is on the list of one of the areas where rare earth minerals and elements can, can be mined, both from new coal mining and also from coal ash. So the Department of Energy has released RFP for proposals and TechSource is going to respond to the, to the RFP with our two teaming partners, Navajo Technical University. I'm sure you're familiar with President Elmer Gey and then also Ma'atani Development Corporation. Prior to COVID, we had been working with both Ma'atani and NTU for development of a filter that would extract the uranium out of the agriculture, the livestock water, and also the water for domestic consumption. But when COVID hit, it became difficult to move forward down that path. And so at this particular point, the, the federal government has released this RFP and our team is going to pursue this RFP. It has the potential of bringing a tremendous amount of economic development to the San Juan Basin. And at this particular point, we are the only entity that we know of that is applying for funds from the Department of Energy to liven up the, the capture of rare earth elements there in San Juan. The technology that we have is very cutting edge when minerals are extracted from liquids. Typically, there's only about a 65 to possibly a 70% capture rate. And our technology allows a 98 to 99% capture rate because the, the rare earth mineral is extracted at the molecular level. So this is highly selective, highly enriched, highly purified material as, as it's extracted. The grant proposal that we are pursuing right now is basically just the beginning of what the federal government is, is going to eventually unleash. This is phase one, which is basically a, we already have proof of concept, but we have to have proof of concept for rare earth. This is basically the, the interview, so to speak, to move on to the bigger money for the development. Phase two, which could occur about six months after we finish phase one, is, let me back up. Phase one is about $200,000. Phase two is $1.2 million. And then, once it moves on to phase three, it then becomes a high probability, a Department of Defense contract. And the sky's the limit on the development because of the tremendous need for our nuclear weapons and other weapons as well for, you know, for rare earth technology. So one of the conditions for the grants is to put together a, a coalition in the basin to support the development of rare earths. And so they've asked the San Juan Commission, San Juan City Council, other organizations, both government, non-governmental coal companies as well for letters of support. This does not constitute a business relationship. It basically means that the county would be supportive of TechSource pursuing the grant funding and then the development of this technology. At this particular point, there is a bill in the US House of Representatives in DC and also a companion bill in the US Senate for $1.72 billion for acquisition of rare earths. When that bill gets passed, there will be more money for development of rare earth minerals there in the San Juan Basin. So basically, that's the background. And the request is, TechSource was hoping that the, the San Juan County Commission would be interested and exciting about us pursuing science that would help economic development there in the San Juan region. And so we humbly ask for the support of the San Juan County Commission. And if there's any questions, Mr. Chairman, I would be happy to take any questions at this time.
Well, Mr. Congressman, you, the two magic words you said were economic development. That certainly is a big deal for us. Is there any questions, comment, comment please?
Congressman, this is Jim Crowley. As one of the people who is on the Four Corner Economic Development Board, these are the kinds of things that we are really looking for, which help us to capture what, what I would call low hanging fruit, because we already have, the minerals have been mined, they just need to be refined. And what you're bringing forth is an excellent idea. Not only that, but it, it gives us somewhere to go and we need to find avenues that we can begin to deal with our economic conditions. So thank you for bringing this and I just stand in support very wholeheartedly.
Jim, thank, thank you for that. And Arvin and I have spoken also for, regarding a letter from the Economic Development Board. So, you know, would thank you, you know, appreciate your consideration for that letter as well. But I believe that coal is the future. Living here in Los Alamos, we have a lot of coneheads, as we call them, the scientists that, that are always examining the, the university environment. And whenever they hear claims that renewables, whether it be solar, whether it be windmill, will be able to meet the energy needs of America, the science is against that. The physics just does not work. And so we're going to be seeing an attempt over the next decade or so to continue to see government bodies moving towards mandates to have certain geographic areas 50%, 75% on renewables. The truth of the matter is that you cannot legislate physics. The physics is with the coal and we need to be developing not only the coal ash that is there, but also keep our eyes open and the window open for future new coal mining.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Congressman Redmond?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to, that you signed the letter of support for the TechSource's Department of Energy grant application.
All right, there's been a motion. Is there a second?
I would second that.
And then moved and seconded. Any other discussion? All right, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? It appears the vote was unanimous unless I hear otherwise. All right. Thank you, Mr. Congressman.
Okay, well, thank you. And I wish I was there in person. And hopefully, the next time we see each other, we'll actually be in person.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item number two, annual update on San Juan Safe Communities Initiative. Greg Allen, Safe Communities Executive Director. Hello, Greg.
Hello, how are you folks today?
Good.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission for allowing me to be here today to provide you folks with an update of San Juan Safe Communities Initiative. Just to remind you, I am the Executive Director of San Juan Safe Communities Initiative. And currently, we are operating with three part-time individuals as well. And just as a reminder, our mission statement is we are dedicated to creating a safer community by enhancing the efforts of community groups that are addressing societal issues. Now, part of our contract with the county is to maintain a website that houses some information where people can go to, to perhaps seek services or, or even view information that might help them when it has to do with health, primarily along the lines of behavioral health and mental health as well. So I wanted to start off with just some electronic statistics. And I'll start off with our, we, we operate two websites, San Juan Safe Communities Initiative website, but also another program that we call You Matter. Now, our safe communities website, sjsci.org, in 2019, our website had a little over 1,800 unique users, just under 5,000 page views. And then in 2020, to date since January, we, we currently have a little over 2,300 unique users with 5,400 page views. So we've noticed, especially during the peak of COVID, that our, our user group and, and page views went up quite, quite a bit during that timeframe. Our YouMatter.com website in 2019 had a little over 1,000 unique users with a little over 7,600 page views. The YouMatter website currently, date in 2020, we have 764 unique users with just under 4,500 page views. So we saw a little bit of decline on that. So we saw a little bit of decline on that particular website. A lot of what we do is electronic media to get messaging out. So if you remember, I said our mission statement is to enhance the efforts of community groups that are addressing societal issues. So really, what better way to do that is by using social media and web platforms to promote what government is doing in our area, but also local agencies or nonprofits as well. So really, that's kind of the focus that San Juan Safe Communities Initiative does. So just our social media platforms, Safe Communities and YouMatter, we operate off of Facebook, YouTube, and also Instagram. So right now, between our YouMatter group and Safe Communities, we have a little over 100 followers on Facebook and just under 1,200 followers on Instagram. The Safe Communities side of this is heavier on Facebook as far as the Facebook following because our reach with that platform is kind of an older generation, whereas Instagram, our numbers on Instagram are a little bit higher with our YouMatter group because our reach is obviously younger individuals. And then YouTube, we have a YouTube channel as well, and right now we have 402 followers, but they're pretty active on our YouTube channel. So when I take the numbers from our social media platforms and from YouTube and from our website, and I compile them into a number that I call reach, because it's hard to, because I'm trying to compare apples and oranges, I just use the term reach, whether it's a video or just a written message or a still image, we see that our reach in 2019 was just over 329,000 across those platforms. But I wanted to touch a little bit on our YouTube platform. In 2019, we had 21,000 video views on our YouTube channel, which boils down to 2,000 view hours, which means that people in our community watched 83 days of YouTube videos that we highlighted local agencies in our area. And in 2020, to date, so from January 1 to today, our YouTube video views are just over 29,000 views, which is 3,100 view hours. So basically, people in our community have watched our YouTube channel for 129 days, again, highlighting local agencies in our area. And interesting, I looked at just the past week, we've had 1,100 views of videos, which was 66 hours, which increased our subscription base by five people just this last week. So that's a little bit about the electronic platforms, but I want to kind of give you a brief overview of some of the projects that we've been working on and kind of as we move forward too. And as far as the nonprofit world, the COVID issue has put kind of a damper on things. And if you kind of see in the background, this is our new podcast studio. So this is one of the things that we've done to kind of change things, how we address people in our community in a virtual manner. But the first project I wanted to talk about is the Youth Homeless Demonstration Project. Now, remember I said our mission statement is to enhance efforts of community groups addressing societal issues? So really, we're kind of a backseat player, assisting those agencies in our community that are doing great things. So when I say Youth Homeless Demonstration Project, you folks know that that is a grant operated by the county. Tracy Neff, I spoke to earlier today, and if you remember, the idea is to reach homeless age, we say youth, but ages between 18 and 26, chronic homeless youth that can be housed with this grant and a case manager. But the grant does not cover household goods or household needs, such as furniture, pots, pans, plates, towels, bedding, and so forth. And so that's kind of where San Juan Safe Communities Initiative has come in. We had partnered with Farmington Fire Department to help do a furniture drive back in November, and we came up with some furniture to assist those first placements. And really, what Safe Communities is doing right now is have a storage unit where we store all the items that are contributed to that program. Tracy, who I spoke to earlier today, who couldn't be here today, wanted me to share that, find that invaluable, that we've done that for them. So to date, since November, we, along with her program, have collected 670 items for the, granted, not all 670 has gone to the placements as today because we do have, still have a storage unit of stuff. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the Mental Health Task Force, which is, we're the resting home for the group, and currently it's chaired by Gretchen, who works for WellPath and who has the behavioral health and health service provider for the county jail. Currently, our Mental Health Task Force has about 123 members, but really, there's probably about 10, 15 that are doing a lot of the work, and then there's a smaller group of about six of us that do some other work as well. So really, we have monthly meetings with local behavioral health and mental health service providers in our area, and we also have a weekly meeting, what we call the Planning Committee, which we meet, again, like I said, weekly. So I hope you guys noticed that some of the videos that we created that came from this group were called Mining the Gap, which highlighted behavioral health services in our area and is just showing a friendly face to kind of connect somebody to services. And we produced 15 videos over the course of the last few months, which gained a little over 15,000 views of those videos, which our platform that we use on that, I co-administerate the Mental Health Task Force's Facebook page, and because of those videos, that really grew our Facebook outreach from about 20 followers to currently 296. So that's some tremendous growth for the nonprofit biz. I also wanted to talk about Recovery Communities of New Mexico, other work that we've done. So because of COVID, we can't have our annual health fair. Last year, we held it at Kiwanis Park, and Recovery Communities of New Mexico had kind of helped us do that last year. But this year, the state has a virtual platform to celebrate Recovery Month, which is in September. So the Mental Health Task Force helped me come up with some folks that we could have do recovery stories to highlight recovery in San Juan County. We produced video footage that I sent to Recovery Communities of New Mexico over this weekend, so we gave them about an hour and 23 minutes of content for their virtual event that would be held on the 26th and 27th. We're also having our own virtual Facebook recovery event on each Tuesday this month on the Mental Health Task Group Facebook page. And so we just aired our first recovery story this morning, featuring one of our local citizens and her recovery story. Her name is Heather, so we really appreciate her.
Greg.
I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
What Facebook page did you say that was?
It's the Mental Health Task Force. So if you look up San Juan County, New Mexico, Mental Health Task Force, it's mouthful, and that's where you would find it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Thanks, sir. And then also, NAMI New Mexico, a national alliance of mental illness, which is a national nonprofit organization that does, for lack of a term, warm services. So they create kind of a network of people, and it's not necessarily peer support, because it does help people who might be suffering from mental health issues or co-occurring disorders, but also a place for family members as well. And so NAMI New Mexico has written a grant to try to bring that program here to San Juan County. So myself and other members of Mental Health Task Force are working on, hopefully, that occurring here, and so thanks to a lot of work from Sue as well. And as you guys know, the YouMatter Trading Card Program, each year we select a dozen high school seniors that we take to elementary-age students to talk about making healthy decisions. COVID has kind of created maybe some issues of how we may do that this year. We're looking at some virtual platforms to do that, and also locations where we can meet with youth to talk about making healthy decisions. And actually, we selected 14 high school seniors this year from Farmington High School, Peter Vista, Bloomfield Aztec, and Kirtland Schools as well. Last year, we did give away all 60,000 of our trading cards, and we're probably not going to print as many this year because we're going to a virtual format and tell things revert back to, as I call, with heavy quotes, "normal." San Juan Peer Support is one of the activities or projects that we created, actually from the Mental Health Task Force, but we identified after the gap analysis had come out, the need for peer-to-peer support in San Juan County. So we developed San Juan Peer Support, which operates off of what we call DTR, Double Trouble and Recovery. And it's a 12-step-type program that's led by what we call a certified peer support worker, who's an employee with San Juan Safe Communities Initiative, and they meet weekly for peer-to-peer support, or what we call DTR. Currently, we are operating through Zoom meetings until we get to a point where we can meet face-to-face again. That's from a partnership with Treatment Court in Aztec, and also our peer support group provides after-care support for new graduates of the Access Program as well. And that's kind of a new decision that had come out of Access. The other thing I wanted to talk about real briefly, because of the COVID issue, or I guess I call our own COVID response, we've had to resort to more of this kind of virtual setting to get messaging out. So in May, Child Haven could not hold their Florida Mary or fundraiser event, so we worked together with Child Haven Foundation to have a virtual event as part of their fundraising project, and in that event, I gotta look at my numbers, had about 5,200 viewers. So the live event, and then when, after it was archived to their Facebook page, we ended up having a little, around 5,200 viewers. They were able to raise $20,000 from that outreach as well. We created a new podcast called This Tangled Life. So much like Mining the Gap episodes that you may have seen, this particular podcast, which is hosted by Megan Coop, you may have seen her on KSJE Radio, our goal is to break the stigma associated with mental health and behavioral health issues, but also to provide a friendly face of service providers in our area, but it's also kind of a navigation tool for people to maybe feel more comfortable in seeking help in these service providers, with these service providers in San Juan County. We just, we're about to air our fourth episode of that program this week. I don't have numbers to kind of reflect what our viewership has been, but we did just record our fifth episode, too, that will air here in the next weeks. So I guess really, my point is, is these are things that we've done to kind of retool or kind of reorganize so that we can reach community members during this COVID issue. And so when I talk about some of this video production stuff that we do, we provide services that are live streaming, but also recorded services as well. And again, the goal is to get the message of nonprofit and government agencies in our community back out to the people, so they're aware of what's going on, but also it's just a mechanism to link or link to services or maybe understand services in our area. The past two years, Safe Communities has pretty much produced videos valued at approximately $250,000. And keep in mind that we are a very small nonprofit with an operating budget of about $130,000. So you may know some of our videos that, you know, we have the mayor's table, and we do some stuff with Farmington Chamber of Commerce and other, again, agencies in San Juan County. But part of that is to, again, make people aware of what's going on in our community because what's going on affects all of us when decisions are being made at a state or national level. But also, it's giving us a platform to be seen as well. So we do have a heavy viewership of the mayor's table, which gets our Safe Communities logo out there and kind of brings people back to our platform, so we can kind of use that as a tool to then connect people to those services that might be, that are in our area. And part of this COVID response as well was we housed information of behavioral health and mental health service providers in our area and how they're conducting business during the COVID issue. And like I said, that's where we kind of saw a peak in the numbers of our website. So that's kind of Safe Communities in a nutshell, and I stand for any questions.
All right. Well, Greg, very informative. I'll go to that San Juan County Mental Health Task Force website to see if we can also use it to promote our next step in our gap analysis.
Yeah, please do.
We linked to it already on our page.
And that's what I was about to say, is that the county's Facebook page was like one of the first organizations to liken and share stuff that we're doing today.
Okay.
And of course, the Mining the Gap episodes were a partnership between Safe Communities and the county as well.
Sure. Any other comments? All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your folks' help.
All right. That gets us to item number three, Consideration of Approval for Satisfaction of Emergency Management Performance Grant, COVID Supplemental Mayor Funding Opportunity. Ali? Ry?
Hello, Mr. Commission. I mean, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, members of the commission. I'm here today presenting on behalf of my assistant, the emergency manager. We have come to ask for your approval to apply for the emergency management COVID supplemental grant. Many of you guys know that the original APG grant is a grant that covers half of mine and Mike's salary. This grant has recently allocated additional funding to help fight, for the fight against COVID. This grant is a $100,000 grant with a 50% match. It will open up on October 1st, well, the application deadline, it will be October 1st, and the period of performance will extend us all the way through October 30th of 2021. I stand for any questions.
Questions? Comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just appreciate the fact that they're looking about how to fund that part of the county that doesn't take money from general fund, and they've been sharp on it, and appreciate the diligence that they're doing, as we find it's matching and full amount grants that keep us moving forward. it's matching in full amount grants that keep us moving forward because during the COVID, had we not known Emergency Management, we would have been in bad shape. The coordination is really astronomical for any of you who have no idea what goes on at the meetings that are had, been going on since March, actually before that, but weekly for many weeks in March, where Emergency Management was coordinating many groups, not just law enforcement and fire, but schools and cities and the different components, the hospital and health organizations, to keep us prepared to respond appropriately. And we really have risen. I see from traveling around the state that we're often looked at as the premier place because we do things well and people figure out how to do what we've been doing for five or eight years. And I go, oh, you all have done good. And then they tell me, well, but you guys have been doing this for 10 years. So it just is a testimony to the fact that our county is a standout county because we have such high levels of coordination among its entities. So thank you for being part of that.
Absolutely. And would you like to, oh, go ahead.
Oh, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Crowley, thank you very much for that. I did want to kind of build a little bit on that point. So the 50% match would typically come out of general funds, but because we were received COVID cares funding this morning, we actually were notified of that. Pieces of the COVID cares that can actually go towards the 50% match. So no funding will actually be coming out of any general fund or any kind of funding on the county side. And then this funding is a little bit different than the actual cares funding. So this will go to help support like our planning projects. So like updating our plans to include pandemic issues and other possible equipments in order to help update our shelter location as well.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve this grant, seconded.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Crowley. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Here's the motion was unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Next is item number four, Consideration of Approval of Resolution Number 202115, in support of a grant application to the New Mexico Economic Development Department Outdoor Recreation Division. Mr. Nick Burrell, Public Works Director.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
As in the title that women just read, this is, we are requesting approval of a resolution of support for a grant application to New Mexico EDD. They have a new division called the Outdoor Recreation Division. This is their first grant opportunity. They're running through that division, as so it happens. As you all are aware, we've been working with NMDOT to complete a recreational trails program grant in the Gladron Recreation Area. That project will be completed, actually, at the end of this week. Part of that project was a large parking lot located off Cal Norte Trail, which is just north of the Farmington City Limits in the Foothills neighborhood. You might be aware, if you use that trail system, that currently people park at the, there's a cul-de-sac at the end of Foothills Drive, they park on the shoulder of the road or within the cul-de-sac itself. So the reason to create that parking lot was twofold. One, to create a proper trailhead parking lot. And two, there's actually a strip of private property between that cul-de-sac that's currently used as a trailhead that the existing mountain bike trail runs through before you reach the BLM property. So there's no easement in place for pressing that private property. It's simply a gentleman's agreement. So again, the new parking lot resolves both of those issues. The terms of the RTP grant do not allow, the existing RTP grant do not allow for any hard surfacing, i.e. pavement or concrete. So we finished that parking lot as a, currently it's gravel surfaced. We had the intent to go back in and use my department's budget to chip seal that parking lot. Coincidentally, this grant application was advertised just about a month ago. Given the timing, the grant's due September 14th, the wards anticipated in October, we can get 50% of the cost of paving that parking lot back. So as I described in your staff summary, project estimate is $19,800 of the 13,200 material purchases, 6,600 is equipment and labor. The program does allow for in-kind match, so we would use our equipment and labor costs as a good chunk of our $9,900 match requirement. The remaining $3,300 would be a cash contribution. The grant itself does not require a resolution from the commission, but it seemed appropriate. The more support we can provide to our application, the better. You might recall that with this commission, it's passed two resolutions in support of the outdoor recreation industry, both in San Juan County and statewide, one in FYI 1617 and another in 1718. The latter of those was the creation of the New Mexico Office for Outdoor Recreation, which is the division that's now offering this grant. So that's fortunately come to fruition. It continues to be an opportunity for economic diversification in the county. So staff's requesting approval of the Resolution 202115. I'd stand for any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
How is it that they view asphalt different than chip seal effectively?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Crowley, so in the RTP program, the recreational trails program, that's a DOT-administered FHWA program, that doesn't allow for any paving whatsoever. This grant through the New Mexico Economic Development Department does allow for.
Okay, so that's the difference.
Exactly.
Any other comments, questions?
So we could actually pave it, but it's cheaper to do the chip seal.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Crowley, indeed, yes. And maintenance-wise, in the long term?
Yes.
Any other comments, questions? There'll be none? Yes, sir.
Move to approve? Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the resolution. Any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. It appears that it passed unanimously. Thank you. All right. Gets us to item number five, Consideration of Land Use Memorandum of Understanding with New Mexico State University Extension Service, Community Garden, Bonnie Hopkins County Extension Service. Hello.
Hi, welcome. Thanks for having me. Bonnie Hopkins, Byers with the San Juan County Cooperative Extension Service. Joining me today is my New Farmer Network Coordinator, Wes Medlock. He is new to the Extension Office staff, so I wanted to bring him in person to introduce him to the commission. Wes is with us through a New Mexico Department of Agriculture Specialty Crop Block Grant for the new Farmer Network program. So I put a little flyer on your tables that kind of explains his program, which will identify available farmland for lease across San Juan County and then be sort of a matchmaking service where we identify potential land users and land seekers and also transitioning farmers that are looking to scale up their production. And so Wes will be with us for the next couple of years and hopefully beyond that, if we can find additional funding for his program. So today, we are here for the consideration of a memorandum of understanding between San Juan County Cooperative Extension through NMSU and San Juan County Government that will create a way to utilize the infield in the walking track for an agricultural outreach laboratory. So we are still working with NMSU Legal and San Juan County Legal Government to come to a reasonable agreement with all of the very specific details as we will kind of learn through this process. But you do have the general understanding that San Juan County Government will provide us the land and the use of the water for no rent, and in exchange, we will become stewards of the land. And so we put together a kind of fun proposal to walk you through what that will look like. So we have deemed it the Growing Forward Farms, and these are just a few of our ideas. Devin told me this would work.
She go.
That's the rule, just blame Devin if it doesn't work.
Just go get Tanya to punch him in the nose.
We love him, Devin. There we go.
All right.
All right. So I'm going to turn this over to Wes so he can tell you a little bit about the ideas of the project.
Okay.
Thank you, Bonnie. I'll pull this down now.
There you go.
Thank you for having us. And it is quite an exciting project, and so we thought we'd put together a presentation for today. So to transition, essentially, the proposal is to transition the walking path adjacent to the Cooperative Extension Office and utilize as a multipurpose property for agricultural education and trainings for specialty crops for entry farmers. And so essentially, the development envisions a long-term investment in our agricultural and academic community by cultivating a space where the principles of the cooperative extension are put into practice and allows my program, the New Farmer Network, to be able to provide affordable plots to these entry-level farmers. As you may know, purchasing land in the county can be quite expensive, and so we're wanting to kind of break down that financial barrier for these entry-level farmers. So some of the goals of developing the Growing Forward Farms include creating an outdoor demonstration area to increase and improve ag education. So this is going to include several different types of demonstration plots that are very hands-on and provide these farmers and trainees and even citizens of the county an experience to interact with these different demonstrations. Also, to serve a diverse population, the next slide will kind of show the populations that this will serve, various partners, but everything from children to students to community members, to teachers, to current farmers, and also future farmers. Also, our goal in providing this development is to provide a central learning location for several agricultural partners that we have. So there is a need to kind of consolidate the diverse and meaningful agricultural partners within the county. And this space will provide a unique location where we can come together and learn the differences between these different practices and techniques and see how they're applied. And also, through the Northwest New Mexico New Farmer Network, we hope and will increase the number of specialty crop farmers. And so this production will be able to, the food production will be able to sell to schools, senior centers, and community centers to improve the health of the San Juan County residents. And also, this development will help the workforce develop training, so food safety certifications and farm safety. We would love to be able to provide curriculum that not only demonstrates how to farm ethically and within our region, but also has to be safe. So as you see on the left side of the screen, there are quite a long list. There's about a dozen here, unique partners within the county that are agricultural partners. And so this includes everything from porridge clubs to the master gardener courses, my program with the New Farmers Network, Future Farmers of America, there's various chapters across the county for that. The list goes on and on. We're also partnering with the Soil and Water Conservation District with some funding strategies and stuff like that. And as you see on the right side of the screen, it's a kind of a rough layout of how we are starting to envision this unique opportunity for our local farmers and our trainings. So you see those plots for entry-level farmers, there's a demo area, there's going to be a beautiful compost area, educational spot, even a fruit orchard that we are.
It also includes some conservation planning efforts, like something that's pretty cool to educate our farmers and ranchers on how to apply for specific programs, something as simple as creating a riparian area on your ranch, even very difficult to have a hands-on example of what a riparian area that would fall by those conservation plans for the USDA programs would look like, also a pollinator area. Those are big ticket items upon the conservation plans of all of our farmers. If there's some, there is difficulty in showing them how to implement them. So having a physical example where they can walk onto it and beautiful signage along the walking path, where they can do a self-guided tour and learn about those practices on their own hands would be pretty incredible and very unique.
Yeah, so as Bonnie said earlier, this will be a multipurpose, or we hope that it will be a multipurpose property. And so there's kind of two primary focuses with this property. Number one is to be able to provide, like we said, these very affordable leasing plots for entry-level farmers. It's very cost prohibitive just to go out and buy land if you're a new farmer, and there's a lot of risk to take on, a lot of skills to develop there. And so what we want to do is break down that barrier, buy these plots so that they can get in the game, get their hands dirty, and learn these very valuable skills that they can take on to, on in their life, and then be able to be our future farmers that we see five, 10, 20 years down the road. So this will help encourage a younger generation of farmers. Average farmer age right now in San Juan County is over 60 years old, 63. So young farmers is what we need, right? And so they will also be able to provide a stewardship service for the property, so maintaining the health of the soil, maintaining the water and where that's being allocated. And the second purpose of the property is the educational demonstration laboratory area. So like Bonnie was just explaining, this provides a very hands-on, tangible atmosphere and learning environment that these farmers can come in and they can see exactly what they need to do. They can take those skills and they can apply it to their personal plots of land, whether it be on this property or outside. So this is going to provide hands-on experience. I would really, really want to strive to serve as diverse of a population as we possibly can. This is meant to be for the people. And we want to educate the farmers and the San Juan County residents of the best practices, like Bonnie was saying, these conservation practices, and provide a space for outdoor classrooms.
So when we're looking at the timeline, obviously, this is a very long-term project, but we are ready to hit the ground. Doug, you said tomorrow, right? So we are ready to hit the ground running with this project. This is kind of a brief overview of a proposed timeline. Initially, we will start by collecting soil samples. Soil health is incredibly important to our farmers, and so is that education. So we would want to establish a baseline of the soil health. So we would begin by collecting those samples, re-establishing the irrigation systems, and then we have already obtained the cover crop seed. And we would set up demonstration plots so that the residents of San Juan County might be able to see what it looks like if you implement herbicide application versus no herbicide application and a dense planting of the cover crop seed versus maybe the recommended rate. And people can actually walk out there and then make the best choice for themselves based on what they can physically see. So this season, we are hoping to get that planted in the ground. And then with all of these exciting projects, we have a lot of grant opportunities coming our way. So initially, we're working with the Soil and Water Conservation District in applying for a New Mexico Department of Ag Healthy Soils Grant that would really get the process started for creating that demonstration area. We'll also be working this season to remediate the prairie dog and the weed situations. Next year, we would start the process of establishing the outdoor learning center, creating those demonstration areas, printing informative signs for program activities, and then creating that scholarship program for new farmers. So these are just, obviously, highlights of the program. It's a work in progress and a lot of exciting projects coming forward in collaboration with it. But we are here today to ask Mr. Chairman and Commissioners for your consideration of this proposal.
All right.
Just a couple of quick things, so that you know. We have approximately 20 acre feet of water rights applicable to that property. It had been banked with the ditch company, but we've already visited with them about removing it from the bank so that water will be put to beneficial use. Hopefully, there'll be enough water to do what they need to do, given the ditch feeds off the animals and the animals very well. The other thing is, I'm sure we'll be able to get the contract worked out, but we came today because it really is important to get your blessing for them to go in and start planning the cover crop. planting the cover crop this fall, so in the spring it's taken care of. Mr. Perrell indicated this morning, he's very helpful, that that's successful because it'll minimize the complaints he gets from the people who utilize the walking track about the amount of weeds, so there's another benefit. It also won't interfere with the employees who like to go down and walk the track. The pipeline actually goes underneath the walking track.
All right.
Question?
Yes.
I'm in District One, and, uh, most of, uh, my, um, constituents are at Navajo, and I'm wondering, uh, you know, as partners, were any of the Navajos involved, um, added? Or maybe it's just the Navajos 4-H that I'm aware of, or are you involving them?
Chairman, Commissioner, uh, Totachini. So we have strong partners in the Shiprock area. Trinny King is the manager of the Shiprock Farmers Market and also the Shiprock Food Hub, and so Trinny is a strong advocate and a partner for us. Uh, and we've been working with her on new farmer training programs and really integrating all, all partners within the community into this project. Um, and we do hope, especially working with maybe Diney College out in the Shiprock and Salley areas, uh, that we can maybe implement a similar project once we get our project established. Um, in regards to the New Farmer Network program, uh, that program is in Year One and Year Two, San Juan County-specific, but we do have goals in Year Three to work with the Shiprock area residents on developing reasonable leases. And so I've spoken at length with, um, Chiliyazi at the Shiprock Chapter about available farmland for lease on Navajo, but it's a completely different process. So we're hoping to really build a foundation with our project here and then work with our program partners, um, in the Shiprock and Navajo Nation areas to extend the projects.
Are you also working with the farm boards?
Not at.
I mean, they're, they're, they're more aware of, uh, who the farmers are, so I'm, I'm wondering if you're working with them.
That's definitely something we'll take into consideration, and, and we're, we're open to working with all partners in our community.
And, um, it's good to see that there's, uh, future farmers and new farmers because, uh, the baby boomers are getting older, and some are wondering, who do I give my land to? Because, you know, everybody's a wage earner and nobody's living off, uh, what you grow. So, but there are young people out there, you know, who, um, want to grow, um, their own, and I know that alfalfa is still being sold, and a lot of, um, people want something more healthy, organic. So, uh, there is a lot of interest in that. Uh, but I know young people that are out in our area, in my district, it's like, I want to farm, but how do I get a piece of land? And so, uh, I, I'd like you guys just kind of take a look at that. Maybe there's ways you can work with, uh, the, the Navajos that you have in contact with.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Crowley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I've seen that Bonnie is very spread thin. I mean, the growers' market initiative that's gotten off the ground this last couple of months and the, and how it integrates with the farmers' market, and, uh, as, uh, Councilor Hare in Bloomville talked about, this is low-hanging fruit, and this is along the same line. And I just want to encourage us as a county beyond Jack and my time that we continue to make sure that we are doing what we can to keep the Extension Office here from Mexico State, because without them, we have a big hole that would be hard to fill, and we want everybody here to do it. And so, um, I thank you for your hard work and, uh, what you're doing. Uh, I, I know it is like gigantic, and you start in one thing and it gives you five things to do, and it's very difficult to get, just as the public, to get our hands around what it is you're doing. And, um, so that's just a couple of things. So thank you. Um, as I've been watching this and was in Doug's office the other day when we were talking about kind of getting this off the ground, and it's like, yes, forward, straight, fast, go. Do not collect $200.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to make a comment about the farmers' market. Um, I saw a really neat way that they do it in Vermont. It's almost festive. You know, they have bands of music and sampling food. I know we got strict on that, where, you know, you had to have some kind of permit before somebody could taste your, your nice squash, um, dish or squash cookies or whatever. And it, it, we don't have that. Uh, it should be a real festive occasion, and, uh, I hope it comes back, because the farmers need, you know, the customers to buy from them. And people are looking for organic, good quality. I mean, there's not, a tomato doesn't taste like the way the fresh one off the vine is, you know? And these kids don't even know it because of what they have in the stores. And, uh, I'd like to see that come back. So, uh, and, and, and let's, let's drick on that, where you, you can't even let people sample the wonderful way that, that these, uh, uh, individuals, you know, utilize what they, uh, grow and, and how they preserve it and whatnot. Uh, I think we got too strict on that, and I hope it does come back, you know? I'd like to see it, you know, where it's just very, very festive, like I saw in Vermont. I mean, you just enjoy going there. People are milling about. Of course, now we have the distancing issue, but maybe it'll come back. But, uh, something creative to, to, um, boost that. Because I know, yeah, I mean, the poor individuals who park beside the road on the, and the, the transportation complains about, you're on my shoulder, you know? And, uh, you know, get out of here, and it's dangerous. So a place where it could just, just enjoyment, you know? That I'd like to see that. So whatever you, you guys can do on that for the farmers' market, I'd like to see that.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioner Totachini. Uh, on that note, the other project that Commissioner Crowley was speaking of was the formation of the Northwest New Mexico Growers Market Alliance, where we found that all of the markets in San Juan County were really struggling doing the same work in separate spaces. And so we created the alliance to bring together all of the markets across San Juan County, uh, in this area, and really support them and have a paid staff position that could help organize volunteers, music, creative things like that, because it's beyond the capacity of most of our markets are being run by volunteers. Um, and so we've applied for a USDA Farmers Market Promotional Grant, right, for us, that will, will get notification, and that we know we are in the second phase of consideration for that grant. Um, so hopefully, we will know by the end of September if we have that capacity. Unfortunately, due to COVID guidelines, we're not allowed to have things like music or sampling at the markets this year, and those regulations actually come from the New Mexico Environment Department and are outside of the realm of the markets being able to control them. So unfortunately, that's much higher up from us, and we just have to adhere to those state guidelines.
We can sign it, I'm sure. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second? Moving second. Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Sullivan.
Hey, uh, I got cut off there. I mean, which, which item are you on now?
We're still on number five, the Consideration of Land Use Memorandum of the Standard. And that's, uh, it's been moved in the second. Any, any discussion? All right. Those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? All right. Looks like the item number five passed unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Gets us to item number six, Consideration of Approval to Increase the Medical Plan Biweekly Premium and Reallocate Percentage of Split Paid Between the Employee and the County. Melissa Wood.
Hello, Mr. Chair, Commission. I don't have great news like Bonnie, that we're gonna move forward with planting and cultivating, but I do come forward with a necessity. So, we have been really, uh, lucky, or not lucky, but prudent in how we've used our plan over the last several years, um, and been able to sustain our premiums, uh, with the budget that we had allocated. Uh, the last premium increase was in FY 2014. Uh, so we've sustained for about seven and a half years at our current rate. Um, we are, uh, looking now to increase, uh, each tier at 8.95% to the employee, uh, and the county's ultimate increase, and our net increase is 2.68%. So, um, it's estimated to bring in $260,000, a little more or less depending on enrollments, uh, into the fund. Uh, and this comes out of, our current net balance is lower than, our cash balance is lower than usual. Um, we've determined or, or have sustained about $2 million in revenue balance, uh, each year. Right now, we're sitting at about 700, a little over 700,000, um, which is, is still a lot of money, but we're spending, uh, over $6 million a year to, uh, pay medical and, uh, prescription claims. Um, so if we have another bad year like we did this past fiscal year, uh, we could be in a bit of trouble. So this is for us to move forward and, and be prudent and make sure that we have the longevity of our plan, are able to continue to offer, uh, a great plan. Currently, we are, where's my other piece? So right now, as far as budget-wise in FY 21, we have already used 25% of our prescription budget and 21% of our medical claims budget. Um, so that's, that's kind of the outliers we're looking at. We also polled, uh, employees through our survey to get a, a perspective of what, uh, they would like to do. We asked them for, uh, to look at increases. We also looked at possible plan reductions as well as some other, uh, nationwide options that we were kind of battling with. So based on the survey, 60% of the employees that took the survey, which was a little over 200, um, had let us know that they would rather have a premium increase instead of, uh, instead of seeing any declines to our coverages. Also, before the, uh, before the meeting started, I put up on your desk a little, uh, kind of quick survey that I put together. Um, it shows you where our employee annual deductible for individual and family is, uh, as well as the maximum out-of-pocket. So when you're looking at, um, the individual and family deductible, we are in line with New Mexico Rotary Healthcare and the State of New Mexico. Um, and then we are actually the lowest for family, uh, when it comes to deductible and maximum out-of-pocket. And then I also put a quick premium chart together for you that has, uh, the individual, uh, employee side and the family side for PPOs, uh, for your top part, and then the bottom chart is what the employers are paying as far as individual and family PPOs are concerned. Um, we're in the middle of the road there, not, not doing any worse or any less than anybody else in, in the grand scheme of things. Um, so I come before you to seek your approval in these new premiums, um, with all of this information in mind, and I stand for any questions.
Well, the never-ending cost, and continue to get worse. Any comments, questions?
Which one is the one that you're proposing on that?
So, uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Totachini, the charts here are just a summary of what we are compared to everybody else. Um, on the staff summary, we currently are at, um, have one plan option, $500 deductible, uh, with a $2,500 out-of-pocket maximum on the individual. Um, so we're not asking to add any plans. What we are looking to do is increase the tier premiums. So employee-only would go from 58.43 on the employee side to 63.66, uh, and that's for employee-only coverage, uh, and that is per pay. And I can run through the other tiers if you would like.
And the, the employees are kind of...
They prefer to see the increase in premiums like this, instead of seeing a less benefits. Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I think our county's done really well to not have had an increase in a long time. And the last time you discussed, uh, our balance and where we were, we were in good shape, and of course, we see the change partly, I think, because people are home and they're going to the doctor more. So maybe that's true, I don't know. Uh, but, uh, as bad as we hate to see increases, and I look at what, what it does to me, it's like, I'd much rather have a solvent system that I can rely on if I should need it than to be going, oops, we should have done something back sooner.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Crowley, that is a very good point. Uh, and the other, uh, point to make as well is that, you know, this increase is allowing us to keep our plan exactly as it is written right now. Uh, no, no, co-pay increases, no deductible, no out-of-pocket. So, uh, it is, in that regard, uh, the premium increase is a much better benefit for a lot of people than seeing a constant, uh, increase to co-pays or out-of-pocket.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a comment. Uh, you know, it's kind of sad that corporations, you know, make money off of like pharmaceutical, you know, those companies, and, and, and you wish it was different, because health is important. Our citizens need to be taken care of, and it should be affordable. But, you know, prices go up, but, I, you know, and I guess the greedy get greedy in our health and bodies and stuff like that. Just a comment.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
Sure.
All right, moved and seconded. Uh, any other discussion? Those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously, Ms. Sahar otherwise. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you so much.
Next is report from County Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, just two quick items for tonight. Uh, the first one is we did receive the certificate of property tax rates. So by statute, we have five days to, um, get that out to the various entities for their certification and approval, then ultimately approval by this body. So, uh, what we're proposing, based upon the receipts of those this morning, uh, letter dated as of today, uh, of course, want to get your feedback, uh, a meeting, uh, this next Tuesday, the 8th, at noon, to consider that, uh, item. We actually may have a couple of other short items, but, uh, that's our proposal to you, so I would stand for any feedback on that, if Tuesday at noon.
That works for me.
Works for me.
Long as it won't be longer than an hour.
Mr. Chairman, uh, this year, we're gonna have Kim Mark for today. So I think she's gonna try to keep it comments free.
That was noon.
Tuesday at noon next week.
September 8th at noon.
Okay.
We'll put out a notice for a special meeting.
All right, and an email?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, one other item, uh, we did receive is, as, uh, as Ry mentioned earlier, uh, our COVID CARES Act grant, um, as well as the Business Continuity Grant. Most of them worked today. Uh, and so we, I want to first off say thank you for all the work that went into applying for that grant. It's a pleasure to meet a lot of folks, but Ally did a lot of the, uh, collaboration and consolidation of that, so thank you for that. Um, we ended up on the CARES Act side of things, uh, with an award of $2,042,500. On the Business Continuity Grants, we received $1,061,500. So in front of you, uh, is the grant application that we've collectively have put together with the municipalities. And so I just want to make sure you're aware of this. Um, we are working... We are working closely with the cities. We thought it would be in the best interest of all the citizens in town that our programs are mirroring each other so that, you know, just because your business is located in one jurisdiction, you're going to have access to more funding than another jurisdiction. And so this has been agreed upon with the other cities, including the town of Kirkland, that the grant, and it also has to follow the state guidelines. Start off by saying that. The state guidelines are that you have to have less than 50 employees, multi-employees, less than an annual revenue of $2 million in care to be eligible for the grant. If you're a larger entity, you're not eligible. And we've broken it down to try to diversify the funding across more businesses. With small businesses, 1 to 10 employees would be eligible for $5,000. 11 to 50 employees would be eligible for $10,000, which is the max from the state of New Mexico, maximum award amount. Now, all of this predicated on the fact, this was part of the application, that they said, we need to meet these requirements that you see within here. So we had yet, as of today, and we've been told through family that we're going to get a frequently asked question sheet or further guidance that would help to certify that the application you have in front of you, that we collectively have put together with the cities, still meets the state's requirements. So we're still waiting that guidance. We'd like to make this application available fairly soon to the general public, have them start applying, but we want to make sure we don't get out ahead of our fellow municipalities. And so we're going to have a call tomorrow, make certain that everyone's ready to move forward with the publishing. Not everybody, as of this morning, had received their notice of award. We had, but the city of Farmington did not, the city of Bloomfield hasn't seen theirs yet. So we're kind of waiting to see, to make sure that everybody's received their award. Big thanks to Mr. Neely for putting together the web-based form. We will take all applications via the web. They will eventually flow into our office and Brenda and Vicki are going to manage the receipts of those applications and processing of those applications within our office and making sure that all the various fields that are required are filled out. So if you could take a look at this and let us know if you have any feedback or specific questions, that would be helpful. We can clarify those before this goes out, is released to the public. Like I said, that's, we hope to have that done here in the next day or two, assuming everybody's ready to move forward. So I can stand for any questions on that matter. I know we've had a lot of small businesses interested in gaining access to these dollars.
All right. Any questions from the county manager? There being none. Reports from elected officials and department heads, please come up and identify yourselves.
Mr. Chairman and Commission, we received some funding from HUD with the CARES Act funding. And I met with Mike, and we kind of brainstormed as to how we were going to use the funding. And I kind of gave Mike an idea of care packages for our families, and Mike thought it was a good idea. So we went ahead and went through purchasing and got some packages ready for our families. And I want to extend an invitation to y'all to join us on Thursday, September 17th, from 8 to 12, to distribute those packages to our families. We plan on having a drive-through to our building and having the families drive through and load the packages in their cars and send them on their way. So y'all could join us. We'd appreciate it. Love to have you there.
All right, thank you. All right, for the record, that was Fay Anderson. All right, any other reports from elected officials and department heads? John?
Fire chief, San Juan County. A couple of quick notes to mark the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Bloomfield next week. It takes effect so on September 11th, which is a big day for fire departments nationwide and for responders as a whole. We invited you, Mr. Chairman, to come say some words, just to help mark this event on a sacred day to us. And all of the commission will be invited. We have some formal invitations to try to keep the numbers down. We don't want too big a group gathering, but that'll be on September 11th.
What time?
Throughout the morning, I think it's going to start around 10:30 probably, and just around 12:30, different portions. We're going to try to time it out, like I said, so we don't have a good time necessary. The other thing is, I assume you guys have told us over several times, but the insurance services office, ISO, comes in and grades fire departments. This year, they've come in and graded three of our districts. We have started receiving those results back. A class one department is the best. Generally, just large, fully-paid departments get that. 10 is the worst. Our state funding is based on that. The money that state funding comes from is your guys' homeowners insurance premiums. So the better the rating, the lower your homeowners insurance. District 6, Lee Acres area, we got theirs back yesterday and actually improved from the class five to the class four. So that's a good thing. We'll get a little more money and the insurance in that area will go down a little bit. District 2, we got back today and they stayed the same as the class four. We're going through yours.
All right.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Any other reports from elected officials or department heads?
Mr. Chair.
Ed, you're not.
Nobody.
Okay, go ahead.
September 13th is grandparents' day. I mean, we hardly celebrate that, but keep that in mind. We all have had wonderful grandparents, especially have been daycare workers for us, and so don't forget them.
All right. I'm a grandparent now, so I agree. All right. Comments input from the general public. Limited three minutes per person on subject. Commission has not previously discussed or formal action has not been taken. No formal action will be taken at this meeting which relates to comments or input from the general public. All right. Do we have any online?
I don't believe so.
We have any hand-delivered?
Yes, sir.
Have any that were mailed or emailed?
Yes, sir.
Or faxed?
That's right.
There being none, then. May I have a mo, do we, do we have a closed session? All right. Let me have a motion going to closed session.
Sure.
Discussion, those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose motion carries. John, we'll just get you on the phone, and Mike, we'll get you on the phone.
That sounds great.[1084.73]
Sit down.
Other than discussion about industrial park issues by third parties and contracts, have a motion to go back into open session.
Aye.
Second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Move second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Adjourn.